Welcome to the April 4th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. On our agenda this evening, first thing, we will have a moment of silence for all those who have suffered with COVID and also for the people suffering under the hands of the Russians. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, we will have public service announcements, then we have a public hearing for a new liquor license. We have department reports from the public building, from the Building Department and DPW. We have several action items, consideration and action on the appointment of Jane D. Downing to the Open Space Committee, consideration and discussion of the Open Space Committee's possible warrant article, consideration and possible action on the extension of the employment agreement between Barbara Reed, interim TA in the town, consideration and possible action to award the contract for the Maple Street water line, consideration and possible action on the appointment of David Martell as deputy fire chief, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Sean Moyno as fire lieutenant, consideration and possible action to accept the resignation from firefighter David Hoyt, consideration and possible action on accepting a donation of $66 from We're All In This Together to the Sturbridge Fire Department, consideration and possible action on an application for special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company for April 30th on the Sturbridge Town Common, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Diane Clark to the Council on Aging, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Patrick Rossette to the Sturbridge Cultural Council, consideration and possible action on the hanging of the Donate Life flag for the month of April, which is National Donate Life Month, consideration and possible action on the approval for use of ARPA funds as recommended by the ARPA Subcommittee, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Okay, public service announcements, Ian?
Just a reminder that voting day is April 11th, right here. Everybody come out and vote.
6:30 to 8 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. And Bob, do you know if the sign in front of the Public Safety Complex has been straightened out yet?
No, I don't. I'll check on that.
Well, only because it's got the P after 6:30. So it tends to read 6:30 PM to 8, which is a short time.
Chair, if you'd like, I can check on that tomorrow.
Oh, I didn't see you there. Yeah, I've had about five people ask me, except they know the right time anyways. Chase, any?
I have none.
Mary?
I guess I want to thank the residents for putting me in this seat for the past three years, and it's been a real joy, and I hope that we get your support again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I do have one public service announcement. It's from the Water Department, Water Main Flushing. The Sturbridge Water Department will be flushing water mains to remove sediments that can cause brown and black water complaints. The flushing will take place from Wednesday, April 6 until Friday, May 20. We will start on the east end of town. The flushing will begin at 8:00 AM and finish by 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday each day. All customers should be aware that water main flushing can cause some temporary water discoloration throughout the community. The discoloration comes from small particles of iron in manganese that are removed from the pipe walls. The discoloration is temporary and typically clears in four to five hours. It is recommended that residents check the water before use, especially prior to doing laundry. Do not try to bleach stained clothes, as this will set the stain permanently. Customers can call the Water Department at (508) 347-2513 or at Shane Moody, sorry, at Shane dot Moody at Veolia dot com for further assistance. Jamie?
Nothing.
6:35, and we do have public posted.
Yep. Town of Sturbridge Public Hearing Notice. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Cracker Barrel Old Country Store Inc., DBA Cracker Barrel, for a new liquor license at the premises located at 215 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566. With the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with MGLCH 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, April 4th, 2022, at 6:35 PM. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566. Your advertisement must appear 10 days prior to the public hearing to comply with Massachusetts' general laws for the Town of Sturbridge bylaws. Failure to comply may result in your application being denied or delayed March 17, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Okay, good evening, and would you introduce yourselves, please, for the record?
Sure. Good evening. My name's attorney John Meridian, Demakis Law Offices. And with me is Corey Rose Scully of Cracker Barrel. Tonight, we're here asking an application for approval for a beer and wine license at Cracker Barrel. It's a new license, in approval of Corey Rose Scully here as manager of record. Cracker Barrel, as you know, is a nationwide chain, and they're rolling out serving beer and wine on their menu. This is the first application in Massachusetts, but there'll be other locations, too. It's simply an application for a new license. Corey Rose here has been the manager at Cracker Barrel since 2009, you said, 2009. Staff will be alcohol serve-safe trained. Anyone who serves alcohol will be trained and certified. And the hours, I just want to clarify, for alcohol sales will be 8:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, to 11:00 PM, and then Sunday, if the board permits, starting at 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So with that, any questions the board has, I'll take.
He has his applications for everything, and I have the publication, so. Okay, questions from the board?
Are you tip certified? Okay.
And the staff who will be selling alcohol servers will be certified.
Jamie?
No, makes sense.
Mary?
Nope.
And patio?
Yeah, we're requesting the patio be part of the license premise in the event they want to add tables out there. You know, with COVID, right now, things are fluctuating, but they do want that a permanent option.
Is that in front?
In front of the store, yeah.
Okay, because we would really have to see how it's set up, because it does have to follow certain protocols and safety.
Okay.
So, do you have a plan?
The plan I had... Right. The plan it has, what was provided to me, that was a request to include the outdoor patio in case they wanted to use it. What I can request tonight is you approve just the indoor portion, and I'll come back with a plan for the outside.
All right, we can do that extension of premises later on if, okay, does the board agree with that?
I mean, we could also do it subject to even Mr. Reed reviewing, so another meeting.
Okay. I guess finally. It's, it was something that they can have it, they'll have it. If not, we can request it after the fact.
Okay.
I just have a question out of curiosity. I know you said that we're the first one in Massachusetts that you're doing. Was there a reason that you chose, are we busier than your other places?
No, we're, so they're...
You like us more?
We're the first here, actually. So they, they came, I filed for Sturbridge, Rentham, Tewksbury, and Holyoke, the four mass locations, and this is the first one, actual hearing we have. I have Rentham tomorrow night, Tewksbury end of the month, and then I think Holyoke will be in May. It's a, yeah, it's a national overall of beer and wine.
Okay, anything else from the board? Hey, it is a public hearing. Anyone in the public? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there a motion then?
Sure, I will move to approve the new license application for an annual wine and beer beverage license, Cracker Barrel Old Country Store Incorporated, doing business as Cracker Barrel, 215 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, with note that Corey Rose Scully is the manager of license. Oh, so the times are...
Yeah. So alcohol sales will be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and then Sunday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
With times of service being Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and you said 10:00 AM to when?
10 to 11 on Sunday.
With times on Sunday being 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Student principal would like to say... Rip to shoes.
Thank you for your consideration. So...
Okay, Paul, would you name the...
Oh, my name is Paul Guerin. I'm the vice principal at Burgess Elementary School, and I'm here to request $75,000 for the reconstruction of the four infills at Burgess, two softball and two baseball fields. So throughout COVID, we've had issues with maintaining those fields. All of our custodial efforts really have been put to a test, and we have focused on the inside and the safety of students. And so the fields looking at them are in a bit of disrepair. So again, knowing that ARPA can cover some of those funds, we did get some good quotes. Our quotes ranged from about $50,000 to $60,000, and the ARPA committee said, well, you know, looking at it, 75 probably would be a fore unforeseen sort of circumstances. So we'll be getting those fields. I had meetings over the last few weeks, making sure that those fields this year will be up and ready for play, but looking at a long-range plan, we're going to have some really, really nice infills there as well, which will address some community concerns that have happened. So if the community votes, we plan on getting those bids in right away, so we can start the reconstruction as soon as possible and hopefully be in line for at least the fall ball. But we had meetings today on the field talking about how we're going to get those fields ready for play this spring, in the next couple of weeks, so.
Questions? Mary?
I was just going to weigh in a little bit, too, because I'm the representative of the Selectmen of ARPA, and it was a unanimous vote. We thought it was a good use of funds, especially, you know, we listened at town meeting where residents kind of spoke, you know, loud and clear about doing a better job maintaining what we have and rehabilitating the existing fields. And, you know, as Paul indicated, his staff, his custodial staff, was extremely busy with CBC protocol for inside the building, and this is a very small percentage of the available money that we had, and we thought it was a real good feel-good project for the community. And we did, you know, it wasn't Paul, he came in with the request for Burgess around 60 or whatever, but the committee decided to put a little bit of a cushion in there, because otherwise, you'd have to go back to the ARPA committee and back to us. Obviously, it's earmarked for that, so they can't spend it on something else. So if they don't need it, it'll come back to us. And Robin, am I missing anything? So we were pretty excited about the fact that, you know, it's something we can do that doesn't cost a million dollars. And for those watching, ARPA is federally given to offset all the problems with COVID, and so it's not going to affect anybody's taxes, it's not affecting our free cash, and I think it's, you know, a great, a great thing to do. The other thing I wanted to add is I know recreation is looking not for, my understanding is no longer for a warrant article for this town meeting, but maybe special town meeting, to do soil samples to do the other fields, and I think Burgess is going to be in with that in terms of the outfield, outfields, but even if, correct me if I'm mistaken here, even if something down the road is done with the outfield, it's not going to, you know, in any way interfere with the work that they've done in the infield. So it's not a waste of time and money. The infills will be done and ready to roll.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Jamie, anything?
No, sounds great.
I'm not against fields or rehabilitating them especially, however Burgess fields are the newest ones, so I find it disconsorting that they got to this shape as quickly.
There is, we did have, baseball did do some work on the baseball diamonds, and that was approved by the facilities manager at the central office and my facilities director. And after they had gotten, done their work, you know, they showed us one load of the sand, and the sand was beautiful sand. By the end of the weekend, the last loads of sand were not what was there. So there's been an issue on those fields for a while at this point, and it's sort of making sure that we're going to work with the community, and, you know, we're just maintaining that, that sort of, we're going to work together with the leagues to make sure that they're respecting what we're doing and that we can have the fields ready for them.
Right, because I do know we spent a lot of money on it, and the fields were especially looked at so that they would be really top grade. So to hear that they've degraded. Anything else from the board?
I just want to say, I think this is great. I've been a proponent, I met with Paul a couple of times, with Jeff, our old town administrator, and I want to thank the ARPA committee for coming up with this money, because it's, you wouldn't believe how busy it is during Little League and...
No doubt.
...t-ball on a Saturday morning. Every parent and grandparents up there, so I think this is a nice thing for the community.
I know, that's why, you know, so much was put into it. We even, town made a swap with Mr. Patel with his hotel, the drainage for them, and so that the softball field would be the same size and everything. So a lot went into them. Okay, does somebody, do we want to take a vote on this one now and just hold the other up until later?
I think so.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the $75,000 request from the ARPA committee towards the Burgess infills.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Yes, you too. Safe trip home. Okay, next we have department reports.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Okay, I'm doing the monthly reports for January, February, 2022. I've got them listed out as the, for January, is grand total for the fees is $6,603. We had commercial permits, three, residential permits, 46, electrical permits, 10, gas permits, five, plumbing, 15. And then Building Department permits grand total for February was 52. The total fees collected was $63,603. Commercial permits, there were six, residential, 46, electrical, five, gas, eight, plumbing, two. And then what I did is I want to, I broke it down to as ongoing commercial projects, so we could speak as to what's kind of going on in town, the people that are watching the, the meeting, they'll understand what's happening. The first thing I listed was Days Inn. They're working on their remodeling. They're in the process right now of getting their plumbing and their electrical inspections done. There has been a small holdup on the plumbing, because they're having some trouble holding their temperatures, their water temperatures, but they're working on it. Six picker cold storage building, steel frames up the walls, sidewalls up, they just resumed work they had stopped for the winter. They've got quite a bit of it paving, the outsides, some of it's done. They're hoping that in the second week of July, they will actually be looking for their occupancy to open up the building. 90 Charlton Road, that's another cold storage building. They're almost in the same location as far as their frameworking. They are working like on their fire pumps and stuff, they got a huge fire pumps that's going in. They're hoping to open in the first couple of weeks of June. 40 Main Street, Edwards Gas, if anybody's gone by there lately, they're, they're doing the facade, they've got the roof done, they've put their stone and stuff underneath, they're signing it. Inside, they've done quite a few of their petitions for the convenience store, and that's where they stand on that. 14, 413 Main Street, that's the old Jimmy D's, they're working on a deli, they're, they're almost ready to open that. 308 Main Street, Deep Roots Whiskey Distillery, which is in a Milliard Marketplace. They've got their dividing wall, they've got it up, they've got it cleaned up, they just started putting floors in there the other day, they're, you know, now they're working on putting their equipment in there and their sinks and different things for the Board of Health. And I'm not sure when exactly they plan to open, I, I'm not sure on that one. 380 Main Street, which is at Wicked Licks, which is where the Travel Center is when you make your turn. That's a new issue, we just, just issued the permit for it at one time. It looks now like they're going to change contractors, so that might be, be on a little bit of a hold until they, until they decide who the new contractor is going to be. And Enrico's Market, which is next to the, which is next to the marijuana establishment, that building is right next door, they're in the same building. They're plumbing and electrical and everything signed off, their, their framing is done in it. They haven't set their equipment up in it yet, but they're, they're starting to board it and parcel the building inside. 110 Charlton Road, Fabulous Footwear, that's, that's a new issue. What they're doing is they're doing the inside of the building over, they're changing the layout, they're putting racks up in different locations and everything, they're, they're kind of paint paper, making it look better, and, and they're putting the racks in such a way, I think, that they feel, you know, it'll be better suited for customers coming in. Planet Fitness, anybody that's gone by, the old J.C. Penney, you'll see the new front, the facade, they've got a lot of that done, they just started boarding it up. They've got the inside of all three buildings cleaned. To the far right is where they're going to do their Planet Fitness. They're hoping to be open in the end of May, early June. In the middle, they had a store going in there, but that's on hold now, and then on the very end, they've got an Auto Parts store that's going to go in there, but they haven't actually started working on that yet either, but that's where that stands. Two School Street, which is the old Riveses building, if anybody goes by there, they'll see they ripped the back roof off, they put, they've put a second floor on, they started to put the roof, it's going to be a 12-unit Edison studio apartment buildings. Parking is going to be across the street, they're putting an addition on the back and in the front, so it'll be six and six. 120 Charlton Road, it's Verizon, they're doing that store over, that's a new issue. And then what I did is I broke it down to Dunn Commercial Products, projects that fit up at 198 Charlton Road, Insurance Brokerage Office, the first floor is like 3,473 square feet. They're in there now. Hall Road, new eight treatment room for the dental office, they're in there, that's been signed off. Rapsgalian, the lower section level of the building is complete, that's been signed off, they've, they've actually opened up, they had a soft opening, and I guess they've started doing business there. From what I hear, they're doing really well, a lot of cars there, I know that. 110 Charlton Road, Fabulous Footwear, as I put it under Dunn Commercial, but I should take it out of there, it's really, they're working on it, I did that by mistake, I guess. 9 Harlan Road, that is all boarded up now, it's made safe and secure. And then I broke it down to upcoming commercial projects, we got the Noble Energy, the old Ford truck stop. If anybody's been by there, they've took down the old, I'm not sure, Mary, what restaurant was that that they, that used to be, they pulled it down, the building.
Couple.
Yeah, they were, I don't quite remember, but it's gone now.
The late night one.
Yeah, yeah. 150 Charlton Road, across the street, Interstate Tony, they don't have their permit, but they're working on it. I know they're going through conservation and everything, and once they get through conservation, I know they're going to be looking for their building permit, for that building. The old Friendly's, they've ripped the inside apart, they haven't done a lot there yet. I was there about a week ago with fire, and they went through the inside, and the architect was there, and he was showing us the layout and everything. They're close to starting their project there. And then the other one is 55-plus Manufacturing Housing Community at 30 Main and 25th Kill, which is right next to the old Jack's Gas. There's going to be 71 combination single and double-wide trailers. I knew they got, they got their approval from planning for the road, for the subdivision, and that was a big hurdle, and I know they're done with that, so they're hoping to get started on that project soon also. And basically, if there's any questions, that's my report.
Okay, Michelle?
October, November, December.
Yeah, the one he did. I mean, not right now.
Nelson, what about the other convenience store right by Dunkin' Donuts that, you know, doesn't have their gas pumps in yet?
Yeah, Lucky Ma.
Lucky Ma.
Yeah, I, yeah, you're correct. That's, I believe those gas pumps are going to open in about the next two weeks, from what I heard.
So they have, I know for a while they didn't have their necessary permits, but now they do.
Yeah, they must, because they said in two weeks they were going to open up the pumps, but the backside, they still, they're doing an addition in the back, the back isn't done, I mean, it's, it's, the shell is on, the siding is on, the roofing's been done, but very little inside the back half, but it doesn't affect the store itself. So when they open that up, they'll be able to finish it and then just break through the wall and open the store at the same time, but I believe they want to get the pumps probably going, because it's quite a bit of money for them, you know, so.
Yeah.
We'll phase it and open the pump section, and, you know, once they have everything said on that. That's a good point.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't trying to have a point, I was just curious.
But it could be, see, because I did January, February, that could fall under the March, and...
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes I'm like, yeah.
No, it doesn't matter, I was just curious.
No, no, that's fine, I was just saying, yeah, yep, yep.
And you know the, the Planet Fitness, it's three areas, it's an automotive store, and then the other one, I know you said the other division is on hold, what, what would they like to put there? Or do they not care, they're just waiting for whatever?
Yeah, they, they had something that was going to go there, but there was some negotiations with the other stores, and they weren't, they, they put a hold on it, because it was going to compete with one of the other stores, so I kind of don't want to say what it was. I mean, I know what it was, but...
Right. But are they looking for something similar, or they don't?
Yes, yes. But they're trying to find something so all the stores, you know, they're not competing against each other necessarily, I believe, you know?
Okay, now Nelson, next to the Blackington Building, the house that was torn down, is there a house going?
Yes, it's a, it's a brand new, it's a two-family. Yes, it's a brand-new, it's a two-family. You know, he's got his permits. He kept the same size, it went through planning. It's a nice-looking unit. Yes, the other one was really bad. I mean, it's, it took a big problem off the table for both I and the fire chief, because I know he's dealt with it a lot too. And, you know, they had a lot of, a lot of, you know, wood and different things in it. I mean, there was a big concern about fire. So we're, you know, we're pretty happy. And it was really rotted, I mean, really rotted, you know, that it, there was no fix for it, so.
No, I'm sure he'll do a good job. Okay, anything else from the board? Do you have anything else or questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mine is much shorter than Nelson's. As you have quite a crowd here tonight. I have really nothing on either the January, February that's noteworthy. It's mostly snow and ice, patchy private roads, mailboxes as needed, some street signs, cleaning the trucks, potholes, ice, we took care of the ice rink. Although I have to say, the ice rink this year was very busy. You know, usually we don't have a good cold snap long enough to keep it cold, but it was pretty busy this year. But other than that, I really don't have anything. If you guys have any questions?
We've already started the sweeping, the brush cutting we haven't started yet, we're
just working on the vehicle, but very, very soon. Street sweeping is not as critical anymore, because we don't use sand, but we still have to do it for the MS4 requirements.
Two months' report?
I just want to say thank you. I thought the DPW did a good job on the sidewalks after snowstorms. I mean, I would text for people who walk and run and, I mean, you know, it was, I know it's challenging, because it got cold and then it'd ice over.
Right, it was, we're not really set up for salting sidewalks, so that's something we're looking into.
But it was better than prior years.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, we have two machines now that can fit, because those fist dale sidewalks are horrible, because they're...
And the poles?
Telephone poles in the middle of them, and getting around them. And then there's a couple areas near Friendly's and that are, just don't get any sun. So as Mary knows, they just don't get sun, so even if it's, you know, borderline freezing without any sun, they're not going to thaw out. Whereas if they're sunny, a lot of times they'll just thaw out and dry out. So, but we're getting there. Yep.
See you later.
Yeah, I'll be here for a little bit.
Okay, everyone has her letter? Is there any questions on it? Somebody want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move to appoint Jane Downing to the open position on the Open Space Committee.
Second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Next, we have a discussion.
She's sitting there, I said that's it.
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't see. Sorry about that. Congratulations. So don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk before your next meeting, otherwise you can't vote. Okay. Okay, next we have discussion on the Open Space Committee's possible warrant. Carol? Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Carol Goodman, with the Open Space Committee. This is Lynn Peterson, another member. Our other member, Lauren Tofoni, I guess couldn't come tonight, she has the job. So I am, I'll try and keep this brief. I am here to talk to you about 70 Cedar Street, which is a 14-acre property already owned by the town. Open space since 2000 has been advocating for permanently preserved parcels in densely developed neighborhoods. And this is certainly a densely developed neighborhood here in Cedar Street. These parcels provide access to trails and away from busy roads. 70 Cedar Street is a 14-acre property that would do this. In the fall, a few people came to a couple of our meetings. And, you know, this is before and after town meeting, and were concerned about this property. They were, they advocated for it to be permanently preserved as open space. So the Open Space Committee, in the beginning of December, decided to walk it, because truthfully, we hadn't, you know, we've been to the rec area, but we hadn't really gone into the woods. And we were really impressed with its beauty. It's hilly, that's what really surprised me, how hilly and rocky and treed it was. They had large wetland and established trails already. And it was obvious that the neighborhoods had been using the trails a lot, because we could easily walk through them. And this was December, you know, we, it was very nice. And it was like we walked the whole 14-acre parcel. This is right adjacent to the 60 Cedar Street, and which is under the rec committee. So they already own that. That's the front portion. And that's a 13-acre parcel. So, so we went back to our meetings, and we discussed it, and we decided that it would really establish something very nice for the neighborhood, particularly, you know, so that they, the neighborhood at large, really, it's Cricket, Cedar Street, Westwood Drive, Westwood, I mean, Woodside Circle, and then all the little roads around the Cedar Lake property. So, and water resource protection is another ongoing goal for open space. And this wetland on this property drains directly into Cedar Lake, which will help keep the silting down. So, you know, obviously, we were feeling some pressure, because we know the town meeting warrant closes and all of that. So we, I called the rec committee right away, and trying to get, well, it was the beginning of February, honestly, and tried to get on their agenda, because I wanted, I wanted to express our intentions, and I wanted to respect that committee, because the recreation area is right there. And, you know, I didn't know what they were planning, if they had big dreams for it, or whatever. But we, so we, Annie couldn't put me on the February meeting. So I put us in for March 23rd meeting. And then I got COVID, and then they canceled the meeting. And so we ended up going last Wednesday to the rec committee meeting. And we presented our plans and just, you know, asked for them if they had anything planned for that area. And they were, you know, they didn't say right now, they didn't have anything on the table. So I told them what our intentions were, and so there were no negative comments. They didn't, you know, that's how it went. And so after that, you know, I want you to be aware of, having just come in out of COVID, these are tough times, and people are very sensitive to what's, you know, being among the group. And it's so, in 2021, 77,000 people on trails that had counters used our trails. That's a lot of people. And that doesn't include Westville, Well State Park, Opakam, because I don't think they have counters, you know, or any other properties, like behind my house, you know, off of the Grand Trunk Trail or anything like that. There's no counters there. So it's, I think people have really relished. We've had so many people come up to us and say, we're so appreciative of open space and the Trails Committee, because it saved us during COVID times. It gave some people someplace to go. And I think this is going to be the new state of affairs now. We have to all be aware of our health. So, so I'm here tonight asking you to put, to place an article on the annual town meeting warrant, to say, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care and custody of a parcel of land known as 70 Cedar Street to the Conservation Commission from the Town of Sturbridge for resource protection, open space, and passive recreation. And so I hope you will consider doing this. I think it's really, it would be a really, a great thing for that neighborhood and for our community at large, is access to this property from Cedar Street. So, like I said, other areas could use it. And it won't cost us anything, we already own it. So it's just, and I think we've been around the block in this property quite a bit, so, and, you know, I think the people really, really care about their neighborhood. So that's my little plug, and I hope you will consider it.
Okay, Carol, thank you. We had you in this evening as a courtesy, because you know the article was a month late.
Yes, but I do know you have a special town meeting, usually attached to the annual town meeting, and so I was hoping that you would consider...
Oh, no, no, I have no problem with that, I just, you know...
Consider, no, I know. But I hope you would consider putting it on that. Like, as I said, it was, it was a difficult time to get...
Oh, no, I know, when you're being sick.
And I really felt like I had to go to the rec first, because I just...
But I would like to get a little input from planning. I would also like to digest this too, because we do all our articles at one meeting. It's easier that way, instead of, you know, one tonight, one tomorrow.
No, I understand that. I know you're not going to vote on it now, but I'm just...
We will definitely.
I'm hoping you will consider it. I really think the neighborhood would really appreciate it, okay?
No doubt about consideration.
Oh, great.
So do we, I'm just confused, do you want to put it on the regular meeting warrant?
Well, I'd love to put it in the regular meeting if you open the warrant for anything, you could put it...
Well, we haven't closed it, but even, even when we close the warrant, we can reopen at the board's discretion.
I know, I know. I, using the charter committee, so I...
I mean, I would be...
We're closing it later.
I think it probably belongs more in the regular warrant, because the special town meeting warrant is just little things to close off bills and that type of thing.
Yeah, there's only four articles on it.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate, I mean, I would appreciate it for the neighborhood. You know, I think it's, they were so sincere and caring when they came to us, you know, and, and then like we walked it, I was, you should take a walk, that will sway you. I was, it was really, really inviting and pleasant, and a huge wetland on it too, which does go directly into Cedar Lake, so, anyway.
No, we will put it with the other warrant articles, and we have a meeting solely dedicated to all the warrant articles.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate the consideration.
Okay, glad you're feeling better.
It's always quick.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Lynn, I like your driveway.
I love her driveway.
Thank you.
Oh, my God, what a good driveway. Wait, why?
Beautiful, it's pretty.
Well, you didn't see my duct tape light.
Next, we have a...
Pride of Downtown Sturbridge.
Consideration and possible action on the extension of the employment agreement between Robert Reed, interim town administrator, and the Town of Sturbridge. When we contracted with Bob, we were looking at an outdated charter that had the three months, and then the three months. The actual charter has six months, and then maybe three months. So his erroneous three months are up now.
I hope he doesn't think of them that way.
No.
We're not letting you go yet.
So we actually need to consider and vote on extending it to the next three months, the end of June, and then we'll see where we go from there. Hopefully, Chase's diligent work will...
Chase will take care of that.
He's not commenting. You're not committing.
Okay, so does the board have any...
No, it makes sense to me.
Problem?
So June 30th?
Yeah. So somebody want to make that motion?
Sure.
To extend?
I will move to extend Robert Reed's interim contract with the Town of Sturbridge to the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.
That was your chance, Rob.
No, he's happy. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action to award the contract for Maple Street Waterline. Which? Evening again.
Yep, I'm back. Well, what it is, is we had a project, the Maple Street Waterline, and the last town meeting, we, our engineering estimates were around a million dollars. We appropriated 1.1 million at the town meeting. In the meantime, Jeff had, Jeff Bridges had applied for federal funding for this project. And recently, we got a call from Ed Markey's office, and we received the funding. In the meantime, the project came in much less than what we expected it would cost. So we, what we'd like to do is expand the project to include the milling and the paving portion of the project, and the loop that goes between Maple Street and Charlton Street down Jamison. That's something we've always wanted to do, but we never, you know, it's kind of one of those wish list kind of things that you never really get to. But with this extra money, we may be able to do that loop and get all the milling and paving done on that, with that money they gave us. So we'd like to pursue that with them, because they usually, once they appropriate money to you, they usually want you to spend it.
Right.
So we kind of want to do that. So we're just kind of letting you know what our plan is. So, and we're going to get an engineering estimate from McClure for the extra work. In the meantime, they haven't contacted us back to let us know, because they had, there's a lot of ifs about this grant. They weren't even sure how they were going to administer it yet. But in the meantime, for now...
Russell, give it to the state.
We just got to approve the bids that we got for about 434,000 for the first part of the project, which is the Maple Street Waterline.
Okay, Bob?
Well, we understood, we thought that this would be going through the state, the State Department, but we understood from our conference call that it's going to be going through the U.S. Department of the Interior. We haven't heard from them yet to pose any questions exactly on how it's going to be, how it's going to be managed, or to answer some of the questions that we had about it. But I think, as Butch explained, what we would look at is that what's gone out to bid already would be the first phase of this project. And we would talk to them about now going forward with the next two phases.
Questions from the board? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then on the bid of 433,612.97 from Ricardi Brothers?
I'll make, you got Chase. I'll make a motion to approve the bid for Ricardi Brothers, Inc., 14 Putnam Lane, Western Mass, 433,612.97.
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Very good.
While you're here, Butch, are we going to get a list of the roadwork for this?
I can, I'm going to give you a list, but I'm not going to actually do any of the work, because I'm going to be gone before we actually get started. But I'm going to give you a proposed list.
Right.
And what I did last year, I knew I was going to be leaving, so we, I bid out for a two-year contract. So the milling and the paving companies are both on the hook for last year's prices, which is perfect, because everything skyrocketed. But they're both okay with it. And so I'm going to put in a list and then let them decide how they want to proceed. The next person, so, but I'll get you a list.
Okay.
There's a specific road down there we'll take care of.
Yes. Not just my request.
Yeah, I don't know, it seems a little shady.
This is in the cemetery.
Mary's Road, on the way out to retirement.
Okay, let's see. Next, we have consideration and possible action on the appointment of David Martel as deputy fire chief. Chief? Chief's around. There are some chairs down here, six or eight.
Come on up front. Come on, y'all look sharp. Come on. Let's go.
I see, we usually sit up there with you.
Signs.
Yeah.
So they all stand.
So this has been a long time coming. We've gone through a significantly refined, refined process. We did an assessment center. We had received 12 applications, two from Florida, two from Connecticut, and eight from Massachusetts. Five people were invited to, five candidates were invited to the assessment center, and Dave Martel shined. Dave's a well-known entity to many of the people in this community, but I'm going to read some of his bio for the people that don't know Dave. read some of his bio for the people that don't know Dave. Dave Martel has over three years... Three decades of experience. He's a talented team builder and comes to us with a strong foundation in both the fire and EMS services. Dave's formal education includes an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, and a master's degree in human resource management and personnel administration. In addition, he has hundreds of hours logged at the Massachusetts Fire Academy, both as a student and as an instructor. Dave is a Brookfield resident with over 30 years of emergency experience in various emergency response models, including volunteer, on-call, private service, hospital-based, and a 20-year career with the MRS Fire Department, serving as a career firefighter, paramedic, and as a shift captain. In addition to emergency response, Dave's experience includes administrative duties, supervisory functions, incident command roles, fire prevention inspections, training duties, public outreach and education, and purchasing. He also has experience with hazardous materials response, tactical and strategic fire ground operations, policy development, grant writing, and he has served as an AFG peer reviewer. Throughout his career, Dave has continually worked to enhance the quality of life in the communities he has served and within the agencies he represented, through his professionalism, pride and ownership, and his sense of group identity within the organization. His unwavering attention to detail and an all-hazards approach to preparing himself for a wide spectrum of circumstances have allowed him to become a well-rounded steward of the fire service and an ideal candidate for deputy fire chief. For all of the reasons stated above, I request that you appoint David G. Martel, deputy fire chief, at an annual salary of $92,000 with a tentative start date of April 25th, 2022.
Okay, thank you, chief. Bob?
Well, I didn't participate in the assessment center, but I know some of the personnel involved, and I'm confident it was an excellent process. The chief and I interviewed the three finalists, and I think we were both enthusiastic about our selection of number one, and I'm happy to forward his name to the selectmen for confirmation.
Questions from the board for the candidate?
I have a question I have a... Let me ask. I just want to say I'm thrilled that we've come a long way since October, and I'm thrilled that everybody agreed to a process that everyone respects. Your credentials are outstanding, and it's good to have tonight as a happy occasion. And I think the Fire Department has very bright days in front of them. So, you know, it gets great.
Is there any particular reason you applied to Sturbridge?
Well, I grew up in the area. I'm 1992. I don't want to give my age away.
That's okay.
I graduate of Tintasqua. I'm in this community every day. I have ties here, and just looking at these guys behind me, I think it's a perfect fit. And I'm eager to get started.
And it runs in family, too, isn't your brother fire chief from Brookfield?
Yeah, I believe he is.
I was like, wait, Mary, are you wrong?
No, no. And the police chief said you're from Brookfield, said you're a solid guy.
Oh, thank you.
Who trusts that guy, though?
I know. I don't always listen to him. It's my son. They're wondering. Okay, no.
Your commute is a lot less, too. I mean, Amherst is beautiful, but...
Good ride.
It's right next door, so...
Yes.
Yeah, so welcome aboard. We're glad to have you. Somebody want to make a motion, though, so we can...
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of David G. Martel as deputy fire chief at the rate of $92,000 with a start date of April 25th, 2022.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations. Oh, I don't know why I always... Got to find some other place to put it.
That'll be the last time I see that happen.
Now, next on the agenda. Not too sure about this one.
I am suspicious.
No, I am, too. I've known him longer than you. Okay, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Sean Moynah as fire lieutenant.
Again, Sean went through an extensive process. The process for promotion included an assessment center, a written examination, and then a review of their training... The candidate's training file, their personnel file, and then they were awarded seniority points as well. And Sean finished right there at the top. And so tonight, I'll read a little of his bio. Sean Moynah was appointed to the full-time roster July 20th, 2015. He's been an asset to this department since day one. He's been a paramedic since 2016 and has served in the role of officer in charge on numerous occasions. Firefighter Moynah is a certified fire officer one and fire instructor one, in addition to holding many other certifications. He has an associate's degree in paramedic technology and another associate's degree in fire science, and he is currently working toward completion of his bachelor's degree in fire science. Based on these reasons, I respectfully request that you appoint Sean Moynah to the rank of fire lieutenant effective April 5th, 2022, at the rate of pay $32.21 per hour in accordance with the current agreement between the town of Sturbridge and the Deamsters Local One Sub.
Okay, Bob?
Well, again, I went over the process with the chief and very pleased to forward his name to the selectmen for confirmation.
Okay, questions from the board?
I'm going to say something again.
Oh, what a surprise.
No, I'm just going to say I think, you know, the apple doesn't...
I'm sorry, Mary.
No, that's okay.
I think I'll have my first...
This is my field, so I have to get as much out there as I can. I just think the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, and that's meant as a compliment, because I think he's a great addition to this promotion. I know you were already on the force, but...
Thank you.
Well, he's been a great since third grade.
I don't go that far back, but I...
Another one of my third graders. Okay, somebody want to make...
How's your grammar?
Better after Mrs. Blanchard.
Okay. Hey.
Chief, it was 3221. So I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Sean Moynah as fire lieutenant effective April 5th, 2022, at 3221.
I'll second it. Discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, Sean.
Well, we got all this other fun stuff going on, though.
A glass of water.
His mother's child, she's bad. Oh, she... You see, whereabouts? Oh, okay. She's way bad. Yeah.
Probably going to drop like five degrees in the room.
Yeah, I know.
I'm actually hot. Bad. I didn't wear a little...
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, but I need to be fresh, fresh, fresh.
Oh, you are fine.
But I'm white.
They all know. They all get it. That way, it's like fair, and when you make the motion, it's tight.
I was like, April, fuck. And I even made it important to write it down, but I couldn't read my own name right now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I liked how... That was something Jeff, I think, where he gave us...
We start taking things out of order.
Yeah, yeah, but...
Because I know how to do it now.
Trying to follow this.
It's nice to just have it.
Nelson, you gave us the wrong one. It's not your fault.
Yeah, no, no. And I don't know, we asked, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, no, it's what they sent over.
I sent an email, sent the asking for the party due.
Well, it's funny when you're trying to read and it's...
And the copy...
And he's not what it's saying.
That's why I saved my motions. Jamie's leaving with the Fire Department. See ya. All right. Right. I shouldn't have to teach new women.
And he gets to show you the stats. Carrie and Emily in Ireland.
Oh, wow.
In a pub.
I love it. What a beautiful picture.
That's they went to. Where did they go?
Emily's here for my trip on May.
Oh, Carrie?
No, Carrie's... Emily went over for her Christmas break.
Oh, fine.
So she was there during St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, my gosh, I bet she showed her a great time.
And Brian also went over.
You should have gone.
We're going in April.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah, no, we could not have all... She has Airbnb, two bedrooms. We wouldn't have all...
Are you going for two weeks, one week?
Just two weeks.
You're just you and Charlie?
Yeah. Because then we come back.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. And Jake...
With the Kiwis?
Went with... Had the base date, your base date ruined.
Yeah.
And I was like, this Paris Lee Phillips doing something sloppy. That green is a little...
We've already gone down the Red Sox road, too, if you want to see that one.
That's what she wanted. She took a French.
Hey, it's a clover.
They don't own the clover, okay?
It's a very specific green, though. It's like a 1980s selfie.
Kelly green, man, that's... Jamie, we sold a lot of those.
I bet. I can imagine, yeah.
I know. We wanted to do it for them.
I saw like multiple pictures, like in the newspaper, of the St. Patrick's Day parade, and I'm like, there's one, there's one, there's one.
It makes sense, though.
Yeah.
And our son Brian, honey, he and Nesbit, another pub.
She is such an Irish-looking girl.
Always is she.
Doesn't fall in love over there.
Oh, you never know.
Does she have a boyfriend?
No, just... She's too concentrating on her school and work. She can pick up a shift to work.
Yeah.
Bring them in with women.
Since everybody can bring their own booze.
Oh, wow, both places?
Well, sometimes on a weekend, oh, yeah. She saves money. Okay, everybody's back.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action to accept the resignation from firefighter David Hoyt. And we have his letter. With great regret that I write this letter to inform you due to personal reasons, I am submitting my two weeks' notice. My last day of work will be on my last shift of April 8th, 2022. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this department and work with some of the best people I know. I wish Sturbridge Fire Department the best of luck with all its futures, future endeavors. Any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll move to accept with regret the resignation of firefighter David Hoyt.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we have a donation to the Fire Department. We're All in This Together for $66. Someone want to make a motion on that?
Yep, I'll accept the donation from We're All in This Together, Inc. to the Sturbridge Fire Department in the amount of $66 with gratitude. From that.
Discussion? All in favor?
I stifled it, but thank you.
Okay, next, we have a consideration on an application for a special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company for April 30th on the Town Common. Any questions on that?
It says they're on the line, too, but I don't... It says call, but I don't know how to go there or not.
Hi, I need to ask you personally from Greater Good.
Hi, good evening. Would you just give us a little synopsis, please, on what it is you want to do?
Sure, yeah, we're...
Even though it's...
Yeah, we're applying for the one-day license for the town bonfire on the Town Commons in Sturbridge in coordination with the Parks and Rec Department. It's an event that we've done multiple times in the past. The liquor license, the one-day license, would hopefully run from 4:30 to 9:00 p.m. The event runs from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We usually like to give ourselves that extra half hour to set up. Be just canned sales from Greater Good. We will staff two to three tip-certified and serve-safe servers to sell beverages. We will load in the product ourselves and remove any unused product.
Questions from the board? Okay, somebody want to make a motion, please?
Sure.
I'll make the motion to approve the special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Imperial Brewing Co. for April 30th, 2022 on the Sturbridge Town Common.
Okay, you want to put the hours, please?
From 4:30 to 9:00 p.m.
Okay, do you second that, Jamie?
Yeah, sure.
Discussion? All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
One extension.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
You as well.
Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on the appointment of Diane Clark to the Council on Aging. She comes highly recommended by Leslie. Any other questions?
Well, that's enough for me.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion, then?
Sure, I will move to appoint Diane Clark to the Council on Aging.
Second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on the appointment of Patrick Brissette to the Sturbridge Cultural Council. Patrick has recently moved back to town. He grew up... As a matter of fact, I hate to say this, because I always do, although I'm a third grade student. He's really... He's a great kid. So, does anybody have any questions? We have his letter and everything.
How many third grades were there? Because you had everybody. I feel like... I feel like three... I feel like six third grades or something?
Yes, yes. I just happen to have a lot of them that are dedicated to services.
All right, like, we're going to turn this place around. They let this lady...
I know. I mean, I got three or four of them. Okay, somebody want to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Patrick Brissette to the Sturbridge Cultural Council.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next, on the agenda, we have discussion and action on Donate. Robin, do you want to come down for a minute, please? Hey, Robin, do you know how many years we've been doing this?
I've had my transplant for 12 years, and I believe probably at least 11 out of the 12.
Time flies.
It does.
Okay, this is the proclamation. It says, whereas there are more than 120,000 Americans and more than 5,000 in New England who are currently waiting for a life-saving organ transplant, and whereas there are over 1 million life-enhancing tissue transplants each year that are made possible by the generous donation of corneas, bone, skin, or other tissue, and whereas we can all help to save someone's life and benefit up to 50 recipients by signing up to become an organ and tissue donor by enrolling in the Massachusetts Donor Registry when we apply for or renew when we apply for or renew our driver's license, or by registering online at www.donatelifeneu new england.org. And whereas New England is home to the pioneering efforts of many of the world's first organ transplant surgeons, it is fitting that Massachusetts continue its unique leadership role and joining the national goal of signing up 50% of our driving population to become donors and is dedicated to making it fast and easy to sign up to save a life through our registry of motor vehicles. And whereas this observation pays tribute to organ and tissue donors and their families whose decision to donate life enables others to receive life-saving organs and tissues for transplant. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Sturbridge do hereby proclaim April 2022 to be Donate Life Month and urge all citizens of Sturbridge to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Sign the Board of Selectmen, somebody want to make a motion and sign the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion?
No, it's wonderful.
I know.
It does, you can't, I can't speak enough, particularly with people going through after COVID, so many people have deferred a lot of health care that they wouldn't have otherwise had, and the need for this is even higher probably right now than it's normally is.
Right, okay. Your second one, Robin?
I officially got put on the transplant waiting list. I want to thank all of you for having me again in all these years, and I want to thank all of you that are organ donors, because right now I am waiting for my second transplant, and it is important to sign up. If you're not, please sign up and register.
Okay, and we also usually have a short 10-minute ceremony of raising the flag down on the common. It's just a matter of timing. When are you available, Robin?
I'm available on Tuesdays and Thursdays, anytime.
Okay.
Except this Thursday. I have to have surgery, I'd rather be here doing that, but.
Okay, well, then the best one fuse next Tuesday, right?
Okay.
The 5th.
No, it's the 12th.
12th, that's right, tomorrow's the 5th. We usually do it about 3 o'clock. Is there anyone that would be able to make it?
The 12th at 3 o'clock?
I can do that.
Ian?
Yeah, I don't know if I'll be able to make it, I support that.
Mary? I'm going to go regardless of whether I'm in this seat, Tuesday at 3 o'clock.
But you will be.
Okay, Bob, can you make it?
Sure.
And we, oh, no, you're not in on Thursday, so that's okay.
Thursdays I am.
You said Tuesday, didn't you? Tuesday 12th, right?
Must be after 7:35.
It's that late-night restaurant that you went to.
And it's early in the evening, really, for me. Okay, you can make it, and can you let the chief know, because he's done it before, because it's usually the firefighters that raise the flag?
And if there's anybody available to like do an article, you know, if you have a paper in town that would like to cover it, that would be really nice, too.
Well, we have the Southbridge paper that comes out two weeks after events.
Okay.
So they don't, they usually get things by tape. We don't have live anymore. We'll see.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you give a little?
It's sad we don't have the, you know.
News.
We used to have the telegram and gazette here. Craig Seaman would come.
Now, they, they, is he not assigned to our town anymore? They don't assign him to towns, they're not even in offices, they work freelance out of their cars. Well, the telegram and gazette used to be telegram in the morning and gazette in the evening. Okay, next we have action for the approval of the ARPA funds. It's recommended by the ARPA Subcommittee. Mary, you're.
I'm on it, I think Robin is willing to. She took all the notes, so she stuck around. She stuck around just for this purpose, so her and Bob are going to take over, but I will chime in and.
Okay, you have the notes.
Good evening. So the ARPA Committee has met several times over the last several months. We have received our first half of the 2.8 million total approximate value of the ARPA funds that the town will be receiving. We received those in the fall, and the second half will, will come later this fall, date to be determined. So the committee was charged with reviewing the options for uses for the funds. We put out a community survey, or I should say, the town administrator's office put out a community survey early in the fall. We reviewed all of those recommendations, we reviewed the recommendations that were put forward by department heads and other received methods, and we came up with a series of recommendations for you all for the first pass tonight. And I can go down the individual projects if you'd like, or, and I just, I guess there was one thing that we, as a committee, did not want to participate in, and we would entirely leave to the Board of Selectmen was any discussion on premium pay across the board. So the ARPA Committee will not be recommending anything in any direction for that, and leave it to the Board of Selectmen. The first project that they recommend is for an emergency repair at the wastewater treatment plant, very glorious one, but if it's not done, it's not going to happen. So they're asking for, we're recommending $75,000 to water sewer for the repair, emergency repair of a screen, so that the wastewater plant can continue functioning.
I have, the screen is not a part that breaks or stops working quickly. This is obviously something they've been known, they've known about. And I can't wait to get their list of things that need to be done that supposedly we knew about that we never did. They do have their fund balance, have they considered using any of that for this? And they also have money that they put in, I believe last year, town meeting was $60,000.
Well, we did discuss that with them, I don't think there's as much money in the fund balances is, was suspected, but I think this is, I think you're probably right about, I'm sure you're right about it not being something that's, that's sudden. I think the issue with this was that, I believe there's one other screen there, and if that would have failed, then it could jeopardize the continuous operation of the plant, so that put some, you know, import in doing this. And so I'd say the timing of the ARPA money was good, and that it gave us the town the flexibility to be able to pay for this, and it's already, you know, in transit and being worked on as we speak.
This, the screen is?
Yes.
And Robin, can you just explain to me, just, so I'm assuming that, well, I won't assume, why don't you just explain to me how the screen system works, and do you know?
I do not know.
It filters out something.
Well, I, I mean, I can guess.
Yeah, no, no, but it's part of it, but it's something that, it's not like.
No, no, it's, it sounds like a multi-level barrier.
And it's not something that would break immediately. If it's been dying slowly, something should have been done beforehand. I'm not, well.
I think you make a good point, though, about some of the other needs with that department, and what I'm, would like to recommend is, since we're going to have Shane and Butch here on the 19th, to do a deep dive into the whole Southbridge project, and Tagan Bond is here as well, that we can expand that and discuss some of the other capital needs with, with sewer and water, because there are a certain many of them, and I'm being told, well, this is something that the town's been aware of, I don't really know what the process has been. At the meeting that we had last week, I talked about the need for a capital process, so I don't know what the process has been to let the town, make the town aware of this, whether it was just a discussion, or whether it was something formal, or what.
Well, it was never formal, Bob, because the Board of Selectmen certainly never. It's a hello.
I just waited a little bit. I mean, I think the ARPA Committee had similar feelings in the sense that we thought we were going to be able to recommend, make recommendations on things that we normally wouldn't have had, you know, with this kind of found money from the federal government, and that's why we were happy to do the infields and stuff. This was really presented to us by Bob, and, you know, rightly so, that this is an emergency, and we have to do this, and otherwise it's free cash, or, so we thought, well, I make taxpayers take the free cash. It really, we almost felt like it really wasn't a choice, you know, it was something that just had to be done, so we said, okay.
Yeah, done and done and done quickly.
Of course, the thing is, it's not tax money.
Done and done quickly, I know.
It's user money.
I know, I know, I know.
Anyways, that's just my blown off a little steam on that, you know, do the same thing when Shane and them are all.
If it's already in transit, how is it going to get paid for if we didn't approve it?
Oh, no, I, I don't think it should be delayed, it wasn't.
No, I mean, I'll go along with it, but reluctantly, because it's something that we shouldn't have to.
Yeah, I, I do, I do want to say that the ARPA Committee, you know, the original intent of the ARPA funds was focused on water, sewer, broadband, and then other. And as much as the other is the more fun and more glorious stuff, as Mary, as Mary Dowling mentioned, that, you know, we, we felt that there was, you know, ARPA was also dedicated for improving and wastewater and water and sewer, so there was, this was the project that came forward from that department for, for that purpose as well. Do you want to go through all of the individual ones, or do you want to go one at a time?
I'll vote each one. Somebody want to make a motion on this one?
Yeah, I'll make the motion despite my stated concerns to authorize $75,000 from the ARPA money to fund emergency repair of the sewer slash screen at the Sturbridge Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Second.
Discussion?
I just may as well say it now, we did meet with the consultants before, you know, we assimilated all the information, and we went down the projects to make absolute sure that they are appropriate use of ARPA funds. I just wanted to add that, you didn't say it.
That's the $85,000 consultant.
Correct. And they said that they're, it's so broad now that they all would fall within it, so.
Yeah, at the beginning, it was really a little more restrictive. Okay, we have motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Michelle, I would also have it noted that I'm voting for it reluctantly also.
Next item was also a focus of the ARPA for continuation on Board of Health and, and public health for response to COVID and, and the long-term impacts of COVID. So the Board of Health has requested a total of $66,500, $60,000 for additional public health nurse support, purchase of an iPad Pro for $1,500, and purchase of outdoor clinic tents for $5,000.
Hey, did they say what the nurses are doing for their share? I don't believe they're doing contact tracing anymore.
I don't believe they're doing, not the way that we trained ourselves about it last year for contact tracing, but I think there are still some issues and concerns, and they're following cases, so they do still have response. We obviously, and the Board of Health obviously hopes that that dwindles as the summer goes on, but they've used, the, the board's already appropriated $60,000 earlier in January or at the end of December, and this is an additional 60, because they've already spent $40,000 of that with this last wave and, and getting through to the opening here.
Had they spent something before we appropriated that other $60,000?
It came out of a different, I believe they were using the CARES Act until December 31st, and then you all appropriated this, and it switched.
I agree, I think it was CARES Act. And, and like Ken pointed out, you know, it's, it's kind of fluid, it's tough to know exactly, because now, wait, there's a new variant, and the numbers are going up again, and ARPA wanted to make sure that, you know, the public health component is probably the most important part of, you know, we wanted to make sure we had ARPA money, so we told Ken, and I think he gave probably himself a little cushion, we said, you know, come back and tell us what you need to, to get through the rest of the year, I believe, or at least till the fall, till the second round of money comes up.
Well, once we appropriate this, they can use it through 2026, so, God forbid.
And these were their, this was their priority.
Exactly. Didn't they originally want a vehicle way back when?
They still do.
Oh. Good luck. Okay, motion?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $66,500 of the Board of Health to continue to fund the public health nurse, the purchase of an iPad Pro, and the tents for the outdoor clinics.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
The next project was a project that was submitted by myself for the capital projects for fiscal '23, and due to the amount of capital projects that were submitted to the committee this year, did not make the cut, and I felt that this was of an important level to bring to the committee separately. This is for the replacement of the square vinyl tile that is in the town hall rooms. It includes the public access room, the kitchen, the copy room downstairs, the office here, as well as the janitor's closet. There's been a failure in the flooring material, and in the public access, I've had to resort to picking the tile up, and the office is rolling around on the subfloor, so I just don't feel that that's an appropriate thing to leave. And I'm putting carpets over the floor to keep it going, is, is not working out so well in the break room either.
It's becoming a safety concern.
Yeah.
It was really surprising to see, I mean, it really is down to the floorboard.
Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome to take a look when, is Jackie in there tonight, when she opens the door?
Any questions from the board? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve $20,000 for the replacement of tile flooring in rooms of the town hall.
Oh, second, sorry. I just spaced out.
I thought we were going to let that one fail.
Okay, all in favor?
Hey, Robin?
Okay, the next one was a recommendation from the ARPA Committee to support the construction funding at 501 Main Street for a total value that, of the ARPA funds of $2,030, $230,000, which is approximately half of the cost of the project.
Any questions? Ian?
This would be pending approval by town meeting for the other half of the money.
Yeah, so, so that is one of the, that you, you are taking this approval to town meeting if you take it on the warrant article for the other half to be funded at town meeting. Yes, that I believe is the intention.
Just a follow-up question, so let's say that we go to town meeting, and then it's rejected, is there any time limits on the spend or anything like that?
On the ARPA?
Yeah.
Well, we'd go back to the committee, it would probably be considered when the committee reconvenes with the second amount of money that the town's got.
So, but there's no use it or lose it period, it's more of.
Well, there is a time limit on the end, not.
Not between that and that.
It's way out.
Okay, perfect. That was bang, only clarification.
Can I? I think that the committee also felt like if it did get rejected, that there was a lot of, I mean, we didn't vote, but there was a lot of positive feelings about using the second half of the money that we get in the fall, because even if the, the townspeople say no, we felt like it's a project half-done, you know, it was always contemplated that we were, you know, two years ago, it was like overwhelming to buy it, that really would have been the time for residents to say, we don't want to do it, and so now to kind of just leave it. So ARPA felt, and I know, I brought the sentiments back of this board that really wants the will of the people, so they didn't, and we ran out of money, but we didn't want to fund the whole thing, because I remember Ian said, you know, you want to go back and make sure it's supported.
Yeah.
So, but there was that sense that in the fall, you know, we would, we would, you know, consider, and also the survey, there were quite a few that said, you know, rehabilitation of Route 20, you know, there was a lot, or do something for businesses, and we felt like this is one thing that we can do for the businesses along Route 20, because for a long time, they've said they want more parking, and so we thought this was a nod to use some ARPA money to do something that people would consider pro-business. I remember, you know, the table three manager got up and said, they're always running out of parking at Avelino, and I think Robin pointed out that once the senior centers construction begins, that Kazan can't use across the street anymore.
And now Rep Scallion.
And Rep Scallion, so anyway, we thought it was a, a good thing to do for business, too.
No, it makes perfect sense.
Do you, somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to allocate $230,000 to partially fund the construction of a parking lot at 501 Main Street, subject to approval by town meeting.
Second that.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Thank you, Robin.
We have one more that we voted on earlier tonight. Good pieces of the board. We were always from the beginning discussing the Joshua High Library HVAC improvement project, and a willingness to fund it from the committee based on being the nature of the project is HVAC. is HVAC. Tonight, the board, committee met at 5 o'clock to discuss the status of that project, and the status is that we really are in a hinge point and could use the design funds at this time, as in tomorrow, to continue to vet some of the potential code and cost requirements that are fronting the project. The Mass General Law for fire sprinklers is right on our heels with this project, and we just need a little bit of design funds to get things on paper, meet with the fire chief and the building inspector before town meeting is the goal, to make sure we either do or don't need fire sprinklers to the tune of approximately $250,000 added to the project. So we, the ARPA Committee is requesting tonight $50,000 for design and cost estimate for the Joshua High Library HVAC improvement project.
We had a meeting last week with Robin and I, and the librarian, and Becky, and Nelson, and the chief, and this came out of that meeting. There's also a time pressure here, with part of what's going to come out of this also are some construction estimates with some options for the selectmen. Is there a way to fix this without peeing sprinklers? If not, then what are the next options to support this project? And to be able to go to town meeting with construction numbers. Otherwise, if this waits until a fall town meeting, even if you have a fall special town meeting, there's a possibility that we could miss and spend more time on this and not have it repaired. It sounds to me, it's a 30-year-old system that's on its last legs, you know, we just don't want to think of the library not having any heat over the winter, which is a possibility if we delay this too long. So this was to help answer some of the questions about the sprinklers and come to a reasonable cost, we hope, for the project, but also to move it forward so we can get moving on the replacement.
Okay, I agree, we have to move it forward, but also, on the other hand, we do have to watch the cost. You know, the most important part is HVAC, other than some of the extensions that were, jumped it from.
Yeah.
$500,000 up to over a million.
And one of the biggest challenges is the total cost that's been put into the library over the last, because the Mass General Law looks at a sum of five years of capital improvements, and the accessibility law looks at a total of three years of improvement. So that's one of the things that is happening now, is we've been funding several things at the library for quite a few years, and they're adding up on us.
Like all the buildings.
Yes.
Safety complex.
Yeah. I'm hoping this finishes the library, though, so I can go on.
Anybody want to make a motion, then?
Yes, I will move to approve the use of $50,000 of ARPA funds to have a, what's the precise wording you're looking for?
Design and cost estimate work.
For design of cost estimate of the HVAC and fire safety system at the Joshua High Library. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Robin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. Jamie?
No, business, thank you.
Mary? No.
No.
Ian? And I have none. New business. Jamie?
No.
Mary? No.
No. No.
Hey, correspondence? We didn't get any. We have minutes of March 21st. Okay, any corrections, additions, deletions? And is there a motion to approve, is written?
So moved.
That's it?
I said, so moved.
Oh, a second.
Discussion? All in favor? One abstention.
I have one question under all business. Are there any more COVID tests available? Okay, I had a couple residents ask. Still at the library?
Please, at the library, and I don't know how many, the senior center, but there are still some of the senior center as well.
We're still holding some.
Okay, citizens forum? Nothing better to do, huh?
I haven't seen you tonight.
Oh, I don't believe that one. I know, I recognize you now. I introduced myself to him the other night. Well, he didn't have his hat on.
She didn't know who I was, but I have.
The only time I've seen him is with his hat on. Okay, is there a motion then to adjourn?
I have a couple.
Oh, Bob, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The request for bids for 8 Brookfield is going to be in the central register. That's been reviewed by council, the invitation for bids. We have another meeting with Southbridge tomorrow, which we hope to have some information to help you when you have your meeting on the 19th, talk about sewer and water issues, and also about where the town's going to be going with the Main Street sewer line and pump station project. The, you have a meeting on the 12th to go over the warrant. I think the Town Administrator Search Committee is going to be doing interviews this coming Friday, so I don't know. I think that they are scheduling another meeting for next Monday, just in case they're not able to make a decision, so I don't know how much you want to expedite the process. Perhaps the best thing to do might be to consider a date on the week of the 18th. The 18th is a holiday, Monday is a holiday, Tuesday is your next meeting, and whether you're able to meet Wednesday or Thursday of that week to do interviews. Otherwise, now we'd be looking at the last week in April.
Ideas from the board?
I could do that Thursday if it works for the board. I couldn't do Wednesday.
The 21st?
I'm good, I'm good for that, too.
What time?
Now, this will be for the actual interview of the candidates. When can we get the names to the board? So they can do their.
Aren't you supposed to be telling us that?
Yeah, no, we'll be, well, we'll be, we should be ready to go after Monday, next week, so.
Yeah, no, as soon as you have them, you can.
So we have a meeting next Tuesday night, right?
Yes.
We should, we should have them for that, because we're going to interview Friday, we're going to meet, convene Friday afternoon after the interviews, and if we can't, then we're going to do it that Monday, so no later than a week from tomorrow, we should have our names.
Right, that's why I'm thinking if it does turn out to be Monday, presented to the board Tuesday, then probably trying to have the finalist interviews that week is kind of, is.
So we have, so just so I'm clear, we're, so tonight's the 4th, obviously, we have the meeting on the 12th, and then we have another meeting on the 18th.
19th.
19th, excuse me. And then the week after is, I don't think we have anything, do we?
We have the 12th, the 19th, and the 21st.
Yeah, we're looking at the 21st.
Okay, that should work for me.
Mary?
You know, I said what I said last week. I'm not going to whammy myself, so I'm not commenting beyond April 11th, so.
Okay.
Well, that's four of us.
I know, no, I know.
You can make these appointments and then pass them on to the next candidate, if you shouldn't win. Just like, here, you already got this stuff to do.
Okay.
And the DPW Search Committee is meeting tomorrow. We're moving that process along for the DPW director. And I just wanted to mention, you have your copy of the town report.
It's always good reading.
Michelle put this together with, I would say, as a minimal amount of supervision. And I was going to say that she did an excellent job for someone who did it the first time, but I think whether it was her 10th time, she did, she did a good job in getting the town report done under pretty busy circumstances.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Nope.
Question, all in favor?